Okay, we're good? Okay. So Trish DeCle with Planning Staff, presenting the General Plan Amendment 2025-021. Just for some quick background, I know that a lot of you guys were involved in it, but maybe for members of the public and for our records, is that a rezone had come through both Planning Commission and Council when it reached Council. They wanted it to come back through Planning Commission with a general plan amendment because it did not reflect accurately what the request was with the general plan. So the Council put that on Planning Commission's responsibilities is to get that, to see if that's what you guys would prefer to see in that area. I guess essentially it's up to you guys to decide how you recommend that to Council. It will have to go to Council similar to a rezone. So you're recommending, but essentially this area in the general plan is an ag-type use. So we would just change that 40 acres or possibly more if you wanted to do that in that area to residential. So that's what the general plan amendment is requesting, is to change that 40-acre parcel, and you guys can decide if you want to do more in that area or not, to from ag to residential. Any questions?
Actually, I think I do have a couple of questions. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
If I'm understanding correctly, that we can't go back and review the septic or the wells, is that correct?
Correct, not in the general plan. Nope, it's you're just changing the use of that area from ag to residential. That's it.
Okay. Just wanted to verify that's part of what we cannot review. So there are a number of other issues that I think we could take a look at. One of the ones I felt like as a commission in general that we, there weren't any comments last time about this, and I feel like maybe more consideration could be given to this, and that is, there were a lot of public comments about, well, traffic and potential headlights upon the neighbors just across the street, and I feel like that that could play a role in decision-making. So I wanted to put that out there.
Commissioner Baxter?
Yes.
To keep us on track, that's not something that we can't, that we're talking about at this meeting. The only thing we're talking about is whether we're going to recommend to the Council to change the general plan. And if so, what does it mean? And if we're just going to vote, recommend to keep the general plan?
Well, I understand that, but I thought we are also being opened up to discuss anything from the previous meeting, so I guess I'm corrected.
Chairman, you're correct. However, in looking at changing the uses from agricultural to residential, you absolutely can discuss any impact that the residential use may have in that area.
But not specific?
Not specific to the development, no.
Okay. That, that was, sorry, that's what I was trying to say.
Understood.
Anything else, Commissioner Baxter?
No, I don't think so, thank you.
Any other board members, questions or comments for the staff? Okay. Is this something that we don't take general comments on, right? We don't have public comments?
Yes, we'll have a public hearing. Yes, oh, my mic went out. Hello? Yes, we'll have a public hearing. Did you hear me? Hello?
It says green, but I can't hear you.
That's why, I think the mic's not working. Tony? That one's not working? Hello? It's quiet.
Tony, can you hear us? I don't think any of the mics are working.
Does this work either?
Audio went in.
I think they're all off.
No one wants us to have a meeting tonight.
All right.
My phone's not working. Your mic's not working.
What was that?
I can hear the mics through the ceiling.
They're working now? It's working now?
We can hear you. Oh, there, there's mine. Our mics went out for whatever reason. Okay, so yes, we will have a public hearing on it.
Did you get that?
Good evening, my name's Jason Harris.
Did we open it?
Yes.
You guys voted, though?
I don't know.
Oh, no, we changed that, right? Okay.
Good evening, my name's Jason Harris with JRG Development of Twillaw. I'm the applicant for the rezone that resulted in this item being on your agenda this evening. I just want to take a quick moment and point out a couple of the benefits to the community in consideration of changing the general plan designation for our property to residential and consider the surrounding land that is also affected by this conflict of the general plan. That identifies the area as ag or sensitive lands and the land zoning being residential. That's the main conflict, is ones designated ag and the zoning is residential for all those surrounding parcels. This part of the Twillaw Valley is very desirable for residential housing due to its proximity to scenic Okla Mountains and being close to local grocery stores, restaurants, and gas stations. I believe availability of homes in this area will attract more affluent members of the community, which boosts economic growth for Twillaw County, offers more mid-range to upper-end housing to complement the large amount of first-time housing that is currently dominating the housing market in our county. This also increases tax income to the county and community from property taxes and local grocery stores, restaurants, and fuels, fuel purchased by the additional residents at these establishments. I believe this is an opportunity to attract potential business owners to the community, which also brings additional revenue to our local businesses and taxes to our governments. I've spoken to another landowner in the area that mentioned they have intentions to either develop some of their land or possibly sell to a developer, which their parcel is also affected by this general plan designation and zoning conflict. I look forward to hearing other community members' comments and the discussion of the commission on this matter. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Gordon Fields. I was here last time, and all of the developments that's happened in Pine Canyon have been five-acre lots, and I'm opposed to anything less than five-acre lots. And I know a couple of you have five-acre lots, live on them. Anybody that lives on a five-acre lot in Pine Canyon is definitely opposed to changing the plan, anything less than that. You know, it might need to be changed from, you know, agriculture, but when you say residential, there has to be a limit on the lot. I mean, we're definitely not opposed, I mean, we're definitely opposed to like one and three-acre lots, like we talked about last time, so, I mean, we're all against it, and anybody that does live in Pine Canyon on a five-acre lot, definitely going to be opposed to it. And we should, we should stay with what's, you know, what the normal is in Pine Canyon and not change it to any city-type lot. Thanks.
Greetings. My name's Brian So, last name spelled T S O. I wasn't able to make the last meeting. I live in the Golf Course subdivision directly west of the proposed rezoning of the 40 acres. I, as a Twillaw City resident, have a few concerns over this matter that I wish to share with you and this body. I am concerned about the fact that this agricultural land is able to be rezoned from five-acre lots to smaller parcels, which I'm opposed to, having a smaller, smaller than five-acre lots. I'm also concerned with the fact that this development will be a huge draw on the city water and Lincoln Culinary Water Systems. What happens when the water, when the wells dry out? Where will the water come from? I also have a concern about the added measure of traffic on Smelter Road. If more of these smaller lots are approved, the road is traveled quite frequently by Twillaw County residents that are either walking, jogging, riding their bicycles, and are just simply out to get some fresh air. I already have safety concerns about the current infrastructure that exists in this area. Many young people frequent this roadway at all hours, and I emphasize all hours, of the day and night, to do exhibition races. Several people speed on this roadway. My wife and I have almost been run off the roadside while walking because somebody was not paying attention, or just simply thought that they were being funny, edging us off the walkway. I would like to be able to walk safely on this road with my wife and my grandchildren. There are already many nefarious activities that happen day and night on this roadway, i.e. vandalism, drug trafficking, drug use, and assaults. Our county sheriff's department are already shorthanded as it is. It takes them a long time to respond to any call. These citizens walk this area because of the beautiful mountain views in this area that is exhibited. My family and I enjoyed the nice mountain views from my backyard. This was the principal reason for my wife, that my wife and I chose to build in this area.
Thank you, sir. Will you wrap up your thought, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Once again, I'm opposed, so.
My name's Tom Bazinas, and I was here at the last meeting, too. I just had a couple of questions on how it'll affect the area around 40 acres by changing that to residential, or will it affect it at all? Does anybody have any answers, or? Okay, well, the other items aren't dealing with just that part of the rezone, so I don't really have anything else.
My name's Chris Lowery. I'm probably affected more than anyone up there. I don't see having a master plan for the county if it's not going to be followed, if it's just, you know, somebody comes in with money and decides they want to change the zoning up there. I know the water isn't available, and the way the soil is up there, the septic tanks are going to be a problem, so that's my concerns.
My name's Kim Hanson. I also live over there. I get super nervous, and you guys are all really scary. But I have the same concerns with the water and stuff, because living on Erickson Road, we have had days where we've been called and said, hey, hurry and get water for your animals, that are, you know, we're not pumping enough water, we're not gonna, we don't know when it's going to be back up. So we've actually lived through not having enough water sometimes, and we have to take care of, you know, our animals or get what we can until things can get back up. But on a broader perspective, just as a taxpayer here in the county, I'm concerned with what is this doing to the taxpayers? So the developers come in and they develop it, they get their money out of it, and then they kind of leave and wash their hands, and us as the taxpayers are left to pay for the new schools. I mean, right now, we have a big issue in Twillaw County with all the developments that have been approved. We've got a lot more students coming into our area, and we can't afford it right now. We need to catch up. The schools that we have, they're bursting the seams. The schools that they're building now, they're just, you know, the expenses for those were a lot more than they thought they were going to be. And as a taxpayer, I can't keep paying to build new things for the developers that are coming in, and they just wash their hands and leave. The tax money and the tax revenue that they bring in with those houses isn't enough to cover all the stuff that we have to cover later. Thank you.
Mrs. Hanson? Can you sign in, please?
Okay. Was there any other public comment at this time? Do you know, close the public hearing. Commissioner, do you have any other comments or questions, first off?
I think I have one question. So if this moves through tonight, do we have to rehear the?
Rezone?
The rezone?
Mm-hmm.
So they would have to bring the rezone back? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, yes. If this is recommended to pass through Council, that's what they sent it back through, both of them, through you guys, so we'll have to hear the rezone again, no matter how you decide on this one, too. So it'll have to come back through.
Thank you. So the question before us is, do we want to amend the general plan or leave it as the old? If we just amended the general plan, what would be the guidelines for that?
So? Chairman, it's just a recommendation to the Council to either amend the general plan from agricultural uses to rural residential uses, or to leave it as agricultural. So you're making a recommendation to the Council on this. Keep in mind, it's already zoned rural residential five, so they could already do five-acre lots up there if they would, were so inclined to, even with the general plan being agricultural.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's no conditions on the general plan like this, like you do in a rezone. That happens at the rezone, so it's just, you're just changing from ag to residential or not, or?
The only, the only other question would be?
I have one question.
Or help on making that recommendation?
Yeah, that'll be something you guys discuss, and you can decide on.
Yes. When I read this right here, okay, he's requesting rezone from RR5, five-acre minimum to RR1, and, you know, RR1, one-acre minimum, property's 40 acres, applicant would like to do a subdivision of one-acre lots or larger.
Right, we're not talking about the rezone, though. We're talking about just the residential use in general.
This is what's in front of me, okay? So I'm looking at it, I'm saying, I look at the plat on the lots, and I count them up, and there's a lot more than 40 lots there.
I'm not, I don't.
I scroll down here, and I look at it, but it's attached right here, and every page I look at has a drawing here with a whole bunch of lots. I think there's 98.
Yeah, you're on the rezone. We're not, we don't have that.
What's the information we were given here? And so I'm just looking at, saying? I just want to know how many lots we're really talking about.
We're not, we're not talking about lots. You're, so you have the old?
I understand that we're talking about a rezone.
No.
Right?
No. No.
We're talking about the general plan and whether?
Right, the general plan altering the general plan.
Right, so we're not talking about lots. We're not talking about, it's just that general area and the general use.
Is not the reason?
Sorry, but if you have the current topic, it's definitely not helping us out. And if you break the rezone, it does not have any attachments?
This is the one I downloaded.
Yeah, so that was your old agenda. So I looked at it when you were requesting some help. That's the old, the old agenda that was sent out.
I guess all I'm saying is to make an informed decision to vote. It'd be nice to know exactly what we're talking about here.
Well, it sprung on because of the rezone, right? This is the reason why we're here for that, but just take that out for now. Do you want residential?
Is, are we going to be RR5, or are we going to go to smaller? That's?
No.
No?
Uh-uh. Nope, right now, you're just going to go, do you want this area to follow, like what it currently is, RR5? Do you want to change it to ag, which is what the general plan has planned? Or if you decide to make it residential, then he can request the rezone at that time. The Council can revisit the rezone at that time because it conforms to the general plan. But because the area is currently zoned right now, RR5, they could come in for a subdivision with five-acre lots right now. But that's why it triggered the general plan, is because that rezone was coming back, right? So they wanted the, they wanted you guys to decide if, in the future, you guys see this area as anything residential, or if we need to possibly rezone that whole area to ag to conform to the general plan. Or if it does residential, just know that more rezones will come in and probably have that impact in that area, right? Because it now conforms to whatever that general plan is for that residential area. So you're just doing a really broad thing right now for what you guys foresee in the future for this area. So like, but like I said, it's kind of tricky because the zone is currently RR5, so anybody could come in and do a five-acre subdivision in those areas.
So did you say if we, if we send it back as a recommendation for the ag plan, then that's when you go to one acre or more, potentially?
No, for ag?
Did I say that correctly?
No, the ag, the ags are, we have a couple of zones. We have ag 5, 10, 20, 40 acres.
I misheard that, then, okay.
So that's what they can do there. So if you change it to ag, it would have to conform to all of our ag zones, which we have five-acre minimum, 10-acre minimum, 20-acre minimum, and that's what they would have to zone it to, or change or subdivide to. They could do five-acre lots still if they, if it's ag, right? So, but it's just, yeah, the Council just wanted it to, it's like a formality, to make sure that if, if that's really what you guys want as rezones, and just know that they could come in and rezone for smaller, you guys had decided that that area was residential, that they could do that. And then once the rezones do come in, that's where you make all those conditions, lot sizes, density, heights, uses. That's where you guys get the nitty-gritty stuff with the rezones.
Madam Chair, I want to point a clarification. Is this time that we're given now a time to only ask the staff questions that we have, or is it a time to express our thoughts and concerns on this? Are we going to have an opportunity to do that later?
This would be the time, Commissioner, I don't know. Would it be the time where we're voting?
Okay. So in thumbing through the monster of what is our general plan, and going through the literature, and then researching past instances where there have been changes to the general plan by this body, it appears to me that there are two or three things that need to be looked at in order to consider amending the general plan. First is need. Is there a need for this to happen? One could argue that it could, as staff said in their report, help us with our moderate income housing need. I wonder how affordable a house on three acres will be to facilitate that need. The second is impact. Traffic, infrastructure, quality of life, all those things need to be looked at. We've went over that in the rezone process. We won't beat a dead horse, but. And the third one, which wasn't talked about a lot, but I think is important, is the neighboring community's opinion. I think that needs to be considered in making a decision. I'm not going to say which way I feel one way or the other about this until we vote, but that's my opinion as to what we need to look at before we all make a decision.
All right. Just a couple of things to clarify. The general plan, we have undertaken as a body for several years. We have numerous open houses, which we haven't been attending. We have adopted this law, and it's been implemented. Also, some of our plans have shown. That was the, I think, the one that we have, one, I think, seen, and we're trying to improve. So it was not changed and leveled, it was finalized, because of the number of, and the number of words we're talking about. Ideally, we would look at it every five to 10 years, not because it was not really documented. The only thing is, again, in our training, we, my law, we have to give a legal reason why we're going to vote one way or another. Let's try it again. It can be, um, from the general public in an open house, like, I'm going to have a light flashing in my eyes, or something like that. There must be a legal reason that we're not involved, that we're not wanting to do something when that's wrong for the reasons. It's not just, it pains me to see this law, because it's not, I think, just, you know, when we talk about a problem, we're, I'm going to tell them what it is, we need to have a problem, and we're going to develop it. Right now, we're on something, always, always, we're going to solve it, as it has not been solved, we're going to solve it. We hope it's not, we know what's happening, it's not, we're going to solve it. Developers, whenever you come, I happen to know this developer is not walking with him, he's not, we have certain standards we have to take into consideration when we do this, so personal opinion cannot be involved.
Madam Chair, point of clarification, this is going to be a question for staff. So I realize that emotion cannot be used to make a decision. You need to use logic, not emotion. So, I, I realize that emotion cannot be used to make a decision, uh, you need to use logic, not emotion. And, um, I know with the, with the rezone, we have to give a legal reason why we, um, why we would deny a rezone. My question is, and I don't know this, and so I'm truly asking, on a general plan amendment, we, do, do we, can we take the public's opinion into consideration on an amendment?
On a general plan amendment and a rezone, you can take the public's opinion into consideration. The only reason you need to clarify a no vote is so that the council knows why the planning commission is recommending against something. That's the only reason.
Okay, so can you clarify Commissioner Scott's comment pertaining to a legal reason must be given?
When an applicant comes, when an application comes before you, you have to look at the code, the state code and the county code. You have to look at that and you have to determine if it's legal. Does it meet the statute? Is everything there that's required by the state and by our local codes? On a rezone and a general plan amendment is the only time that you can take opinion, uh, there's not clear requirements that you have to follow in doing a rezone and a general plan, but that's the only time. If somebody comes before you with a subdivision.
Or a CUP.
Or a CUP, and they can meet all the requirements of the state and the local code, that's when you have to have legal findings to deny. The only reason we ask you to clarify a no vote on a rezone and a general plan amendment is so that the city council, or the county council knows why you said no, why you're recommending against it. So, yes, in a rezone and a general plan amendment, you can take the public's opinion into consideration. Now, keep in mind, on the flip side of that, if you were to recommend against it and the council was to say no and the applicant filed an appeal, then the judge is gonna wanna know if the public is coming in saying this is gonna lower our property taxes, they need to be able to prove that. So, there has to be some factual basis to back up the public's opinion if it got to a point where it was challenged legally.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm not suggesting, I mean, we're tired on it, but you said we had a dozen open houses on there that nobody showed up. I'm not suggesting, especially three years after we adopted it. We do, we need to make the recommendation if we need to, if we want to keep it or if we want to amend it to the county council.
Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Hope, just, uh, add a quick statement or, you know, my opinion, but one, one thing to, can you hear me?
Yes.
One thing from the general plan, I mean, and thank you for going against.
Just residential, yes.
Chairman Hope, I hope you don't mind me riding your coattails, uh, your last comment, but I want to add to it. So, if you look to the south and if you look to the west, yes, there are, uh, many high density neighborhoods. I would say the difference is tho- those neighborhoods are in the city limits. Everything surrounding this subject property is R R five, um, agricultural to the, uh, to the immediate south, to the east. Trish, what is it to the north?
Most of that is just all Pine Canyon, so it would be R R five, R R one.
What's the general plan, though?
Oh, it's residential.
That's right, so across the street is residential. North side of, of, uh, Smelterooge residential, south side is, is agricultural up until you reach the conservation district, then it becomes open space, if I'm reading this correctly. And so, I would, I agree with you, Commissioner Hope, I would just say, um, there, there are slight differences in the communities to the south we- and west versus, um, the one that we're, uh, the, the subject property that we are talking about.
Commissioner Dowell, the properties to the north, and some of the people that have discussed or made comments tonight, we had to do, um, some rezoning for them so that they could get about five acre lots because ten years ago, they were forty acre lots, so it happens every month.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the clarification, I, I agree with you. My question is, did you change, did you have to amend the general plan for those proposed lots where Mr. Fields lives?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So, if, if it was agricultural, could they not have built on five acre lots anyway?
Not at that time.
Because it was NU forty?
But to get way late, is there any of those?
I'll make a recommendation, I recommend that we, that we, what's the, we're making a recommendation to the county council to amend the Tuila County plan to allow, to change this forty acres from agricultural to residential.
We have a motion to, um, right, make the recommendation to them because to help, um, our magical to, to a residential, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we will do a call on this, Commissioner, how about your vote?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, um, Beckstrom, how do you vote?
Yes.
That was Stetts, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I thought I clicked it.
Commissioner Stetts, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowell, how do you vote?
No, I'll give my reasoning. The reasons I mentioned before, um, I don't think it meets, pardon? So, I seconded it to bring it to a vote.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that I have to vote in favor of the motion.
Okay, just one vote to my right.
Correct. Um, just as, just for the reasons I stated before, I don't think it meets our need, I don't think, I think it has a negative impact, as stated by, uh, the traffic study did not show a negative infa- impact, but as far as infrastructure, it did, uh, with Tuila City. And, um, the neighboring comments were not, uh, in favor. In fact, I don't think there was one that was in favor. And so, um, that's my reasoning line.
Um, this is Commissioner Scott, I vote no. Uh, Commissioner Bartson, what do you think?
Yes.
And we skipped Beckstrom, really.
I, I asked him and I heard his.
It was Stetts answered for him, so he didn't really, he didn't really get a vote yet.
I think Stetts heard incorrectly.
So, call on him, I guess.
So, so, so I'm, I'm also voting no, and I'm, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, uh, in the same area as, uh, Commissioner Dowell. I just, I can't, uh, verbalize all those reasons exactly the same way he did, but I, 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 I agree with, I'm kind of piggybacking on what he said. All, all the same reasons, I just don't know how to, how to, uh, verbalize them the same way, so it, it's, it's still a no vote.
By my count, rare type, right?
Yeah, it's split. Yeah. Oh, what was your reasoning, uh, Tony?
Reasoning is because we just adopted this year, not time in twenty twenty-two. We spent a lot of hours and a lot of time on them, um, I just don't feel it's appropriate to reveal this three years later. It will be time to revisit it, but not now despite that.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, question for staff, so do we just move, does it move on as a three-three tie to?
So, if we don't have a substitute motion, it will move on as a negative recommendation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you have on.
Sorry, we're just kind of discussing, um, a substitute motion would probably just be the other way to the, to not recommend, and then it would probably just be a tie again, just with the opposite effect.
Okay. So, I, there's no other motions that you want to try and make or anything? Just want to clarify that. No other motions? You guys are settled with the split vote?
Cause it was made.
So, so, point of order, point of order, uh, Rachel, about a gentleman, Rachel, if, I don't recall if we can address now, after the vote is made. Um, I have a question to ask Chairman.
Okay.
Scott on her opinion, as I just pointed out. She made a comment, which I, I, I think I understand it, that we spent three years, um, designing, no, no, it's only three years, the different one's only three years old, I can't. And she made, the comment made it sound like we're building the whole general plan again, but that's not the case here. We're still like. On the reason, I don't understand what difference does that make?
I made the motion last time, to result, and so, it's just the work that went into it. It's not part of it, I guess my thought is someone should start opening it up. Then that gate's open, the flight gates open and we see it more, but I do recognize videos of like the living document and we will be making trying to stop it. Apologize if that wasn't clear.
Okay, so, that's the, this end of our agenda, so it's up to you guys to decide what happens next.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah.
You changed that, right?
So, we, uh, we to let it go to the, the, the county council with the split decision and, uh, changing the general plan, and that will be up to them, is that correct, Trish?
Yeah, that's correct, so because it was split, it would go as more of a negative recommendation. Um, but they'll know that it's gonna be the split decision so that they can determine that. And then, um, all of your reasoning and stuff, they should know all of that, so then they'll, they'll decide the final say.
Madam Chair, point of clarification, just question for staff real quick, so you're saying they could send it back?
They could, yeah.
Well, I. I don't want to give, I don't want to give Mr. Harris the runaround, I.
That's why I think we need to, we need to come up with something tonight.
I, uh, yeah.
And I'm open to suggestions.
We adjourned it.
Youth a jerk.
What was that?
The no votes, is it because of the lots size, it could touch a lot size?
No, no, they gave their reasonings.
And I don't think we can take that into consideration.
Madam Chairman, may I, uh, interject one thing? If you guys are committed to work through this tonight so that the council doesn't send it back to you, um, our next motion, we need to change it from agricultural to low intensity residential, not just residential. Please make sure that gets clarified, low or medium intensity. Um, we have to specify which residential intensity.
All right.
Okay, can you, um, Trish, tell us the difference between low and medium intensity?
Um, I'm sure it's spelled out in the general plan, I don't know off the top of my head, but low, um, low intensity, so we have, um, our residential areas can go, um, I would say forty acres or smaller. And then, the medium is, um, five to ten, and the high density, well, one to ten probably, and then the high density is more of your one acre or smaller. The general plan spells out, I'm sure exactly what those are. Oh, yeah, okay. So, those would be like, the high intensity ones would go from anything smaller than an acre, um, to your multiple residential, high intensity residential, medium is one to five, and then low is anything bigger than that.
I have a point of clarification, just, there was a motion, I'm not saying that we need to adjourn. I, I thought we were done. I made a motion to adjourn, it was seconded, based off the rules we adopted, we don't have to vote on it, correct? The, the chair has to recognize it, so we are good to continue.
The chair has to adjourn.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify.
The chair has to close the meeting. But keep in mind that your ag properties start at five acres too. So, it could be a medium density with, with ag too, they could do five acres with those.
Our developer took it down and changed it to five acres, no general plan change?
Yes. Yeah.
You don't even bring it before us, right?
They could do a five acre.
Yeah, yeah, they could do the five acres of them, sorry, I didn't understand exactly. Yeah, yeah, they could do the five acres. Sorry, I didn't understand exactly what you're asking. So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because that zone is currently rural residential right now. It hasn't been changed to ag, even though it's projected as ag. It's currently RR5, so they can do what's currently there right now.
Madam Chair, and Trish, are we allowed to ask Mr. Harris a question? I mean, according to your, to be in push, we've got, we've got a camp, I mean, why don't we ask him an answer?
I think.
Mr. Harris is not the applicant.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
For the rezones, you can.
Tricia, I may be able to answer your question, though.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, just, if I'm not mistaken, didn't he agree last time that he wasn't going to do less than three acres?
You guys put that condition on it.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for that, thank you for that. So that to me is, I don't know, I mean, we all agreed, we all said yes. I bring that up because if this gets approved, agriculture to rural residential, we, that's the first step. From our, the second step is, do we now control? So if they come to present everything, then we know.
So you can't go smaller than five acres right now?
I understand.
Yeah. So it'll have to remain as, yeah, it'll have to remain as RR5, or if you change it to ag.
Before you make your motion, Commissioner, just can I get a clarification again on low intensity residential?
The low intensity? It would be, I have to think of all of the zones that we have that are residential. We have the RR10, RR5, and the RR1. So the medium intensity would be like, probably one to five acres, the medium residential. The low intensity would be probably anything bigger than five, and then the high density is anything smaller than an acre.
Question for staff. If, so you're saying if we were to make a motion to, sorry, if we were.
Yeah.
Medium, because low intensity. Yeah, okay. That's what I was wondering.
Commissioner Hope, do you want to throw out your motion?
Well, I mean, it is understood. I believe Trish said we couldn't, so I need some understanding.
You can make a whole nother motion, technically, because the first one was split. And so if you make a new one and it changes, however you.
So, so let me help you with this situation, Michelle. If I propose a motion, obviously I know it's going to be agricultural to residential. But it might allow, at this point in time in the process, was libulation? Does that gun to go under three acres?
No, that's at the rezone stages.
That's what I thought. So I'm trying to articulate, or even actually articulate and find out the range. That would give everyone some solace, I guess. Because I personally, my person, I don't see a problem with changing it from agricultural to residential. As long as we can understand what we. If we say yes, we're agricultural, we're residential, that's how towards the percentage of the land. Which is also, we have a, um, but I don't know what's going to make the rest of the commissioners feel at ease. They have their answers, their questions answered.
Yeah, so just keep in mind that when it first came through, the majority of you voted rural residential with a minimum of three acres. Was fine, and that passed four to two. So when you guys first brought this through with the rezone, that's what passed through. The council said, well, it just doesn't conform, so send it back through, see if they'll change it, then we'll move forward with the rezone again.
Help me understand why the.
Commissioner, I'll, I'll help you with that. So the general plan calls out potential land uses. And our code states if you're going to rezone a property, you rezone it to what conforms with the general plan or you change the general plan prior to the rezone. The general plan calls for agricultural uses. Just because it's zoned rural residential, that's not what the general plan calls for. So the council said, our general plan says if we're going to rezone this area, we're going to rezone it to agricultural uses. If we're looking to rezone it to something other than what it is today that's not agricultural, then we want to see the general plan changed to what that rezone would be, so that the rezone conforms to the general plan.
Oh, no, awesome, perfect, which I still think is an excuse to avoid a decision. That's okay. So again, it is the priorities, they want to take more in case of floods. So just be definitely changing from agricultural to rural residential. I mean, quite frankly, it's something that, of five acre lots size. So I think we're going to. So other than the, other than the original motion is that I move it to. I, I, I'd like to make a motion that we move that we rezone this parcel land from agricultural to rural residential.
Would you make a recommendation on that?
So if I'm taking this through, so Michelle, help me. If a three acre minimum is quite low, then that's, that's.
Medium, medium.
So what, what's low, medium, high? That's up to you guys, really. So when they come in with the rezone, you could decide if we were to call this low intensity residential. When they come in, you look at the surrounding areas and say five acre is low, or three acre, or. You guys need to decide if you want low intensity or medium intensity residential, if you're so inclined to change it to residential.
But point of clarification, according to the plan, low intensity is five acres or more?
Yeah, I was just giving like an example of the zones that we had. So the biggest residential zone, residential, we have MU40s. We have ag properties that are bigger, but the residential ones are ten acres. And then we have RR10, five, and one, which are rural residential, which are, could be considered low or medium. The higher density ones are anything smaller than an acre. So those would trigger like the R112s, R17s, which are like seven thousand square foot lots. The RM zones, which is a rural, like a, what am I trying to say? The multiple residential areas, stuff like that. So those would be definitely your high intensity ones. But yeah, we don't have anything in a residential zone that's bigger than ten acres. Those would trigger into different type uses. I mean, they can obviously be bigger, right? But those are our minimum requirements for those areas.
So Trish, where is that other development, I can find Canyon, relevant to where this property is?
What?
About four miles away, three miles away?
No, no. It's not that far away.
You talking about the one. Pine, which one are you talking about?
We have many that are one acre lots.
Everything up and through, right across the street. Some of those lots are quarter acre sizes and an RR5. They've been there forever.
So what? I don't think, I can't speak for anyone else. I can only speak for myself. It's not the development factor that, that we are adverse to with this development. We, many of us stated in the last meeting, you know, you were either in favor of three acres or five acres. It's not development we're adverse to. I'm going to mirror what Commissioner Scott said in her reasoning for her no vote. I share this, this same reasoning. It sets a, dangerous is a loose word, but I'm going to use it. It sets a dangerous precedence if we start changing our master plan, our general plan, from, we start converting our agricultural ground to residential ground. I think it sets a dangerous precedence. This isn't an island in the middle of a city. This isn't the island in the middle of a subdivision. This is on the outskirts of what, of our town. And so, and with respect to Commissioners Scott and Commissioner Hope, you guys spent a lot of time on this general plan, and I know it is just a guide, but you guys spent an extensive amount of time on it and decided that this area was agriculture. And so I'm wondering what the change is now. I don't understand that. Go ahead.
So here are my thoughts on that. Is when we, when we work on a general plan, we really don't go parcel by parcel. It's just kind of more of a throwing, not darts, but just circling an area. You're like, oh yeah, this area looks good, you know, like this is where all the development is. So this area is going to stay higher density, right? I say higher density because there's really no high density in the county. So like, we say, okay, this is where the higher density is. And then we say, okay, well, we don't want to go from high density to nothing, so let's, you know, roll it out generally. And if you look at the plan, we generally try to do that, you know, and look at where, you know, this is where we think green space is going to be. And it's not like we're getting out the parcel maps and looking at like, well, this is Farmer Brown's property. He's going to want to change this in ten years. You know, we're not looking parcel by parcel. We're not saying, oh, we know Joe Smith, he's going to sell his property. Let's put that in higher development. It's just kind of a general. This is kind of, you know, like, here's what we have and here's what we would like to see in the future. And as developments come, as properties come up for sale and different people buy them or people who own them decide they want to do something with it, then we relook at the general plan and say, kind of like you were mentioning, you know, if somebody came and said, hey, look, I own this property out in the middle of, you know, not by any development, and I want to build, you know, build a subdivision here, we might question that. And we have in the past, you know, in some places, we're like, you know, this is kind of spot zoning where we're away from light zoning, all of a sudden someone's like, oh, here we want to put higher density. And I agree, where this is next to the higher development, the next process out is a lower development. So when the properties east of this one come up, we, you know, then we can say, look, the property next to you is three acres. Let's, you know, you're going to go five acres because you're further out. That's, that's how I view it. That's where my, my vote's coming from. And why, you know, for me, general plans, they're general plans that are guidelines and help us make these decisions, but they're not that we have to stick to what's in the general plan.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Bartowski, that was well said. Commissioner Hope, you have, you made the motion. Will you please restate the motion, including your doubts? If you're some kind.
You're going to make remember, all right. So I think, I make a motion that we, I don't know, how do we approve? We send for recommendation on this parcel land from agricultural to rural residential on a medium intensity level.
We have the motion to make a favorable recommendation to the county council. So among the general calls, the ground, I think, so you're, is that the number? I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hope and a second from Commissioner Stetts. We will give the vote. Commissioner Bartowski, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckstrom, how do you vote?
I vote no. I prefer to leave it agricultural.
Commissioner Dow, how do you vote?
I vote no for the same reasons I previously stated on the previous motion.
Commissioner Stetts, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Scott, I vote yes. Commissioner Hope, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so I have. Four to, four in favor, four medium intensity.
Four and two.
Four and two, to no. Okay.
So we have a better recommendation we will make to the county council to amend the general plan from agriculture to rural residential medium intensity. Thank you. About this time, I will reject the meeting.